Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Budget CIP Overview Work Session Agenda on Thursday, April 25, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. We'll now have our -- if you would, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Williams, if you'd like to call the roll.
Councilmembers Cal Shighi.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments would be limited to three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box. Green means you have time, yellow means you have one minute, and red means that the time is up. With that being said, would anyone like to address the City Council on any matter at Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. All right, next item is our Budget Overview: Presentation, Discussion, and Potential Direction to Staff on the Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19, Year End Estimates, Fiscal Year 2019-20 Annual Budget, and Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Olson?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Today, we will be reviewing the fiscal year 1920 budget. We will take a look at a variety of things. We're going to talk about the process and the materials, the budget to actual for '17, '18, and '18, '19 for comparison purposes. We will also look at the fiscal year 1920 budget overview as far as the revenue and expenditure projections, and then we will cover the capital improvement plan before we council discussion. For the budget process and materials, the budget process is about a 10-month process. It's governed by policy. CIP begins in the fall. We work on the operating budget starting in December, and then we have the council retreat where we get direction from council on what you want to see in the budget, just primarily by listening to your discussion and knowing what your priorities are. Then we do a detailed review of the departments' budgets, and that will happen at the May 16 meeting. And just as a note, we are required to adopt an annual budget per the state law. You have your CIP budget books that have been distributed, and then the operating budget book will be distributed before that session. We're hoping for at least a week before that May 16 session so that you can take a look at further overview and the operating budgets for each of the departments. So we're going to start by looking at fiscal years '17, '18, and '18, '19 to see how we did. For the '17, '18 budget to actual, we've listed all of the funds there, but the general fund, just for the public's information, the general fund is the least restricted fund, and that's primarily where expenditures are for such items as police and fire services and some public work services and parks and recreation. We have special revenue funds, the enterprise funds, and then we show the total for that. So for comparison purposes, if you look at '17, '18's actual revenues and actual expenses, you'll see that the actual expenses are in excess of the revenues. The budget numbers exclude $28 million in debt proceeds and debt payments of about $6.6 million, and the actuals excludes the $12.6 million in the debt proceeds for PSPRS and the debt payments of $8.7 million. And this is -- we remove those items just so you could get a better feel, a better overview of what the actual operating expenditures and revenues are compared to each other. So for the general fund for '17, '18, the budget expenses exceeded the actual revenues by about $2 million. Actually, they were very close, by about -- they were within $1 million of each other. Helps if I look at the right column. When we look at the '18, '19 budget to actual, again, we have excluded the debt proceeds and the debt payments out of the revenues and expenditure categories as described before. You'll see that for the general fund in particular, the estimated actual revenues of $53.5 million and the estimated actual expenses are within $1 million of each other. So that's, you know, we're moving in the right direction. We did budget that the expenses would exceed the revenues slightly, and that's significantly due to just some carryforward projects. For '18, '19 available resources, more common, what we used to refer to as fund balance, we now call available resources. So for the general fund, you'll see that for '18, '19, our estimate is that our revenue will actually exceed our expenditures by about $1 million. In the estimated available resources for June 30 of '19, we have excluded the budget stabilization reserve, so that's already been removed from there. And with that out of there, we still have $19.1 million that we're estimating for the end of the year. And so for June 30, '19, that budget stabilization reserve is about $11.3 million. And so you'll see that the total for all the funds, revenues actually equal expenditures.
Yay.
Feel free to applaud. So then we want to look at the proposed budget for '19 and '20. We will primarily focus on the capital improvement plan today, but we do want to start by giving you an overview of the operations as far as total revenues and expenditures, just so you can see kind of where we think we're going to be at this point. And then, again, as I mentioned before, the operating budgets for the departments will be covered in detail at the May work session. So for '19, '20, the proposed budget, again, the estimated available resources for June 30, '20, we've already removed the budget stabilization reserve, which is estimated to be about $12 million. So we are trying to set aside additional funds for that next downturn in the economy, which we know is all coming. Nobody can pinpoint it, but we know that it will come. So we want to make sure that we're setting aside additional funds to help us weather that. So for the general fund, we have estimated revenues of about 50, almost $56 million with estimated expenditures of $54 million. And the estimated available resources, again, those numbers, that number reflects the inclusion of transfers that occur between funds, any noncash adjustments such as depreciation, and also the $6.3 million PSPRS debt payment. We have one more payment, and that's in '19, '20 for the PSPRS debt. Then we want to take a look at revenues. Revenues are definitely growing between FY '18 and FY '20. You can see the chart there. We've included utility revenues. The green bar is '18, orange is '19, and the blue is the '20 fiscal year 20 budget. Utility revenues are growing moderately. Taxes, which includes property taxes and sales taxes, are increasing modest, you know, moderately, nothing too extreme, but at least it's still showing an increase. Intergovernmental are those state shared revenues. So you can see the differences there in each of the categories. So for the protected revenues, the revenue estimates are based upon existing trends, some economic forecasts, and any potential or realized legislative changes that have occurred. So overall, we're looking at about a 4.6% increase over the '18, '19 estimate. Sales tax within that is 3.4% above, and property tax, staff is recommending that we hold the rate flat, that there be no increase in the property tax rate. It would remain at the .6718 per $100 assessed value. You can see the total tax levy there of about $4.9 million. When that is done, the, there would be additional revenue, tax revenue of about $300,000. $70,000 coming from new construction, and just from keeping the property tax flat rate flat, I get my words, too many words there, we would generate an additional $230,000. So that has been the number that we've been using so far, based upon staff's recommendation to you at this point. For the state shared revenue categories, you can see the increases. We get those from the state schedules, so they're estimating increases in each of those three categories reflected there. And then we have utility revenues. That increase in utility revenues is basically just growth and additional revenues in the new accounts. We are not, it does not include any water or sewer rate increases. And then HERF, there's just a slight increase of 1% over the fiscal year '18, '19 estimate based upon the numbers we received from the state. In reviewing various revenue options, there was one category that kind of stuck out to staff for which a tax may be appropriate for consideration. We definitely may, you know, could use additional revenue sources that aren't quite as volatile as are the pure sales tax rate. So we took a look at the commercial lease tax and compared the different Arizona municipalities. So Lake Havasu City is only one of five cities that has no commercial lease tax. This is a tax that's imposed on the business of renting or leasing the use or occupancy of real property, such as office buildings, stores, parking, storage facilities, items such as that. So you can see there that we're one of five with zero, but that 85% of the cities in the state have between a 1% and a 3% tax rate, and you can see the breakdown of cities at each of those rate levels. The amount of revenue that could be generated from this, we don't know yet, but we're assuming that it's going to be, could be anywhere from moder, if we wanted to stay really conservative, probably $300,000 to $500,000 a year we could bring in by adding this tax, which would be a significant budget improvement. So moving on to expenditures, on the expenditure comparisons, these are the categories that we spend our money in on a line item basis. So we have the personnel services listed, and that includes all the personnel, any position changes, merit increases that we are seeing may occur in FY '20. Any additional staff and employee benefit costs are also in that line item for personnel services. So overall, with all those changes, there's a 4.9% increase. Supplies and services, those are contracts for professional services in addition to all the different supplies used in all of the funds, would be going up by about 9.2%. And then CIP and debt would be going down. The debt and contingency reflects the removal of the additional debt that was included in the prior year. Within those numbers, we wanted to reflect the number of budgeted full-time positions. This is the 10-year history of those positions. So you can see that there is a slight increase between '19 and '20. Some of it is just by changing the way that we're doing business. Some additional positions that were added are related to janitorial service. We are proposing that we bring janitorial services in-house rather than contracted out, so that, just to have that control over the facilities and to have the level of service that we require. So that would include five, this includes five janitorial positions, two in particular that would be specific to the parks restrooms. Is there any questions on that? Just let me know. We did want to, at the same time when looking at full-time positions, it was important to reflect part-time positions. So these are the part-time positions history over about a nine-year period or eight-year period there, it looks like. So you can see that even though our, when the FTEs were, the positions were going down in the full-time category, they were going up in the part-time category. So there are challenges with part-time positions. We have seasonal positions that make sense to have the part-time positions, but there are other categories where the part-time positions, it's very difficult to maintain, you know, the same staff and keep them on board after the investment you've put into them learning their job. So with that, that's it for the overview of the funds and the positions. So I'm going, if you don't have any questions on this part, or it's up to you, Mayor, if you want to ask questions in between or at the end, that's up to you, but we're ready to go, turn it over to Jess Knudsen for the capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Do members of the council have questions now? Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you. I do have a question. Let me back up here a little bit. These aren't numbered, so I'm not sure. Okay. The revenue comparison for commercial lease tax, I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Who is, who is this going to be a tax on? Is this businesses that rent the buildings or the owners of the buildings or what, what is that?
Yes, it would be businesses that rent out their facilities.
That rented out or are renting it?
That are renting or would be renting.
Okay.
As soon as you begin renting, the tax will be due, such as storage facilities, the rental on that would have a tax associated with it.
Storage, what other?
Office buildings.
Okay.
So the rental for office space, stores, so rental of space for retail activity.
Okay.
Banquet facilities, and then storage facilities. Those are the primary categories.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any other members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson at this time? Vice Mayor Lane?
Jill, you commented on the comparison between part-time employees and full-time employees. So are we getting rid of, say, two part-time and filling it with one full-time position? So in the long run, we're saving money by not having to turn over and spending money on training new employees all the time?
Yeah, a portion of this is exactly that. We did that in the area of customer service, actually this fiscal year, which also contributed to that change in FTEs as far as in the meter readers section. We think we can accomplish some, achieve some more efficiency by having a full-time meter reader position or customer service technician, so to speak. And then we're also doing that same thing with the janitorial and the parks, so to convert part-time positions to full-time, to hopefully gain that efficiency.
Do any other members have any questions at this time? All right, we'll move on to City Manager, Mr. Knudsen.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. First off, I'd like to thank, thank our many employees who contributed towards the development of the CIP and our department heads for their careful analysis of their operations and the needs of the community. And a special thanks to Jill and Cassandra for all their hard work. They talk about this being a 10-month process. This doesn't stop. As we go forward, I'll be presenting some of the CIP projects, the existing, the completed, the existing and the future projects. I'll do my best to provide any details that, for questions that the council has, but we do have our department head and staff in the audience, so we'll be bringing those up if we do have questions that require more technical analysis. The book you have in front of you is, includes all the projects for the next five years, so we'll go through it, hit on some of these. This slide right here is our current projects. So these are projects that have been funded in previous years and up into this existing budget year. The number on the, in the column represents the total cost, and you'll see the parentheses that talks about the design only. So you'll see the significant costs, investments, the community is, the city has made in the community, include the Havasu 280 infrastructure, our ERP software, which is about, which is expected to go live on July 1st this year. And you'll see another, another cost there is tied to the Lake Havasu Avenue reconstruction, which was a huge investment for the community. And once it's completed, I'm sure the residents will enjoy the completion. A quick overview on carryforwards. So every year, we have a CIP, and in some, some cases, we have projects that aren't completed, either 100% or partially. So those dollars then get carried forward into the, into the future year. So we can either complete them or take a look at them from a new strategic perspective. Some of these projects are, include the, our 2017 and 2019 tank and booster station improvements, all the, all the presentations that come before council talking about the quality of the tanks that are needed to provide quality water to our, to our residents, a very important service that we obviously provide. The park restrooms are, we're going to carry over about 50,000 of that, of that project into the next budget year. And then another one that we've, sometimes we have projects that came in over, over budget when the bids come in, so it's best for us to carry those projects forward and maybe look at them a little bit differently. Example, that is our water conservation project. We were looking at trying to extend effluent lines from our plants to the different parks in the community, and it came in far over budget, far exceeded the budget we were looking at. So rather than trying to force that project, we're looking at it a little differently, and maybe we're just going to look at the, the parks that are in direct proximity to our wastewater plants. Cypress Park is a great example, right across from our mulberry treatment plant, and we can, we can bring effluent water over to that site, save some water, save some money on potable water costs over the years, and at that point, it makes a lot more sense. So those are some examples of the, the carryforwards that you're going to see, but we do have 40% of that happening in this, in this budget year. Last year, the City Council adopted a fully funded CIP, which allows our staff to properly plan for projects and provides the council and the public with the understanding of what projects the city, the resources the city has for these, these projects, and the expectation of when these projects will be completed and, and what type of timeframe. This year, I'm recommending another change to the, to the CIP and how it's funded. Right now, we are identifying CIP projects within, that we want to see completed, and then we're going, looking backward to say, okay, now where do we get the money for all these different projects? So my recommendation is that we, we identify a budget each and every year. This is for the general fund, CIP. So we'd have a dedicated funding source for the first time, if council is amenable to this, this approach. We'd identify our construction sales tax as that dedicated revenue stream for CIP. Right now, we take in about $2.2 million each year on construction sales tax, a 2% tax on construction in the community. The reason for picking that, that revenue stream is because it's strictly tied to the economy. If the economy, if we had a recession or there's a decline in the local economy, construction sales tax dollars go down, that allows us to take a look at our CIP projects and make an adjustment there. Has less of an impact on the day-to-day operations of the city and the services we provide, whether it's parks, police, fire, those types of services, water, sewer that our residents expect. So that's something I'm recommending this year, and the CIP that, that we're presenting reflects those dollars in that type of a budget. Again, this year, there will be no unfunded category of projects, so everything you see in the CIP is fully funded to the extent of the dollars that are identified in the CIP, and staff is recommending no issuance of debt to accomplish, to fund the, to fund the CIP. As we go through, please interrupt and ask questions. This is something I think that was included in the packet to council. It just shows our funding sources for the, for the CIP. So this is the natural dollars for everything. This is the funding sources that we use to fund the CIP. You'll see a very small amount in HERF. HERF dollars, right now, we're using, we're able to bring in the dollars that were assigned for HERF or Highway User Revenue Fund. This is gas tax, VLT, collections that come from the state based on population, Lake Havasu City, and we're spending those dollars on ongoing expenses. So all the pavement preservation projects, the crack sealing, the personnel, the equipment it takes to maintain our roads, the dollars coming in are very close to the, the dollars going out just for the ongoing. We're going to try to maybe identify some strategies down the road to see how we identify larger construction projects, road construction projects. The one that probably looms the largest is McCullough in the downtown. That's a project that was identified in the CIP in previous years as unfunded. There's pavement concerns, there's utility line concerns, there's, we have clay pipes down in that area, there's something that needs to be done. So we will be working on trying to develop a strategy, and maybe we're taking a few dollars out of the HERF budget every year to make that happen, and we'll be looking at other alternatives as well. You'll see on the very bottom there, the IDD is our biggest funding source for the, for the CIP. This is very important because this, this district will be sunsetting in 2023, so we're going to have to identify how the city funds the CIP through the IDD and also funds operations. So it's going to be very important on how we, how we address this. Now, the IDD is funded in large part through a property tax, through the, to the citizens in Lake Havasu City, but that district, when it was originally formed by Robert McCullough, included the municipal boundaries at that time, or the boundaries of Lake Havasu City at that time. We've had construction take place outside of those boundaries, so we have, right now, we have a situation where some homes are paying into the IDD through the property tax, and some of the newer construction that falls outside of that, that existing boundary aren't contributing towards that, towards that fund. So a few options moving forward on how maybe, how to address this, and that's going to be looking at, at expanding the district. That will require a, an election or a vote of the people. Other options we could be looking at, if we want to make up that, that sum that were, that's needed for operations and CIP projects. And we'll get into all the water and wastewater, specifically the water projects that are funded but through this, through this funding source. We'd have to look at maybe increasing monthly rates for, for, for water and sewer. On average, that'd probably be around $12 to $15 is just a shot in the dark, educated guess based on some data, but that's a per month cost to, to our residents as opposed to the, the property tax where it's being paid out of right now. Staff will be recommending, we'll see it in the next work session when we talk about the ongoing budget, that we'll be recommending a water, wastewater rate study. This'll allow us to develop some options for how we manage the removal of the IDD and allow us to take a look at, over the course of the next 10 years, what infrastructure projects are needed to maintain services to the, to the public, and at that point, being able to identify the, the rates needed to make that happen. So we either lower or adjust or maintain the, the rates. But we'll, we'll talk about that in, in great detail when we come to that. So now let's get into the, some of the projects identified in the CIP. This is a chart that was included in the original packet. You'll see kind of the breakdown of the CIP over the next five years. The CIP is $89.6 million over the course of five years, with the majority of those dollars coming from water and wastewater. You'll see a large, a large allocation to the airport, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but that's heavily subsidized by, by grant funding. So some of these, these are, they're different, they're all funded, but they're funded through different funding sources. Some are grants. Some are with regards to drainage, and the red piece on the, on the right, that's our flood control district dollars that we receive every year, so we get about $2 million every year, and we use that to, to improve our drains and our washes. So that includes, encompasses the CIP. A lot of times, we talk about the parks and general government CIP, but there's so much more that goes into the development of the CIP and the investment the city makes to the community. As I indicated before, here's some of the, we'll get into some detail now as far as the different categories. As I indicated before, some airport projects identified here, but you'll see that pie chart on the bottom. The blue represents the, the city's contribution towards these projects. So we'd be contributing about 7% towards the $16.3 million identified over the next five years in the CIP. You'll see some significant investment in runway and taxiways, so we have a need over the next few years to address some of the cracking and some of the deterioration of those, those facilities out there. Drainage projects, I touched on this a little bit. So here, here we're talking about what we're doing with that, roughly $2 million per year, and now the community can expect which, which drains and which, which, which washes that the, the city will be improving over the, over the next five years. So here's that list right here. General government projects, we're looking at three projects here. One with the Norristore software utility billing allows us to, to maintain a software program, allow us for quick and easy use for the, the public to, for utility billing, for special events, and we've already started that process. We have a few dollars left to spend in, in that fund, but that's something that's, that's tied to the ERP project. You'll see the Vision 2020 projects on the first line, that's the Environmental Learning Center. That's the Environmental Learning Center and the Downtown Catalyst Project. The the city has three point two million dollars allocated towards those two projects. We don't, we haven't broken those out. So whatever project has the the momentum will will be a we'll be looking at probably those projects first. Right now, the city has not received a plan. So we don't know what what we're looking at in terms of the Environmental Learning Center. We don't know what we're looking at in terms of the Downtown Catalyst Project. But once plans are provided to the city, we'll make a review and see if there's dollars that should be allocated towards towards those projects. One change here is that the three point two million dollars that the city has for those two projects is gonna be offset by about five hundred to five hundred fifty thousand dollars in the the sale of the the land at the down on the Downtown Catalyst Project. You'll see a year five, we've identified a new project here for the new municipal courthouse. It's programmed for twenty fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Our court operations are growing, and the county's contribution towards a consolidated court is not keeping up with the the operations of the of the court. So we need to look at a few different alternatives. And this is one, one of the plans we have is is identifying funds for a courthouse in the CIP in in year five. The tentative idea here is that we'd locate it somewhere on this this campus, maybe on the the west side of the existing city hall where we have some land. We'd save some dollars that that would otherwise be used for the acquisition of of land. So now we have some park projects that staff is recommending to council. The biggest one here, we're looking at the the HVAC and the the for the aquatic center. The the facility is is aging. The the original design was not what we needed it to be to to cut the humidity out of the aquatic center and it's wreaking havoc on on the building itself. So this would be an investment to preserve the the invest to preserve the original investment the city made in the in the aquatic center. So but this is a very large dollar amount. This would take care of the HVAC and all the ventilation exhaust systems within within that building. The overall this year's strategy is to take care of our existing parks and resources in contrast to spending significant dollars on new new facilities. For example, one project you're not seeing on this slide is the Island Ball Field that we talked about in previous meetings. We talked about it at length at the annual planning session or the retreat that we had back in back in January. At that time, we're we're trying to identify a a way to introduce ball fields or amenities into the community that that wasn't gonna come in over budget or wasn't gonna be at at a outrageous amount. Since then, we've taken a real close look at the the Island Ball Field location. Where right now, we have a football field and a little league field out there. And we have a large amount of users. A lot of a lot of our residents are using those facilities right now for organized activities, for unorganized activities. But we're seeing a lot of use out of out of that space. So the strategy here is to forego the the ball field on the island and identify a means of improving some of the our existing parks and other facilities. So what I will be recommending, and we'll see that come up at the next CIP. But just so you know, the offset of that two million dollar in the ball field and other big big dollar items for new facilities is my recommendation is to put about is to put a hundred fifty thousand dollars into the into the budget for every other year. And we utilize those dollars for upkeep and maintenance and improvement of our existing facilities. So we could look at the the fields on the island that I mentioned, the football field and and the little league field. Right now, that little league field is unusable, a small investment, and we could get some use out of the out of that out of that field. And then complement some of the uses that are taking place on that football field out there. Other strategies with those dollars, if the council wants to pursue this option, we could look at signage in our parks. There's a signage in Rotary Park, Leonard Bridge Beach, Jack Hardy Park, a lot of different parks that we have some outdated signage. And over the years, we just kind of add a new sign here and there. So it'd be nice to have a a nice welcome sign in Rotary Park and then do some analysis on which signs make the most sense and are most welcoming and informative to the to the public. At Rotary Park itself, we don't have any large remadas out there. So we have a lot of smaller remadas, but we don't have a large one. So family reunion or a large get together, we don't, we're not able to to accommodate those types of events unless you're fragmented with the with the smaller remadas. We have a need to to maintain our playgrounds, and so some of those dollars could be used for that. Other uses for that for those dollars would be, we've heard in at the Parks and Recreation Board meetings, we heard at the the council meeting earlier this week, and from others with the communications and emails that we we received is the need for for additional soccer fields for the area youth. We could take a look at using some of these dollars to improve existing existing fields for that use. We could look at maybe a partnership with the school district. There's a few different options. So if we dedicate a revenue stream towards those types of functions. And again, the strategy is let's let's take care of what we have and improve what we have as and take a break from introducing new large projects into into the community for now. Not to say we're not gonna do it later, but right now, there's a need to maintain what we have. In in the next year CIP, so this is in nineteen twenty, we have dollars set aside for the construction of eight additional courts. There's four that exist right now, pickleball courts, it'd be at Dix Sam Park. The seven hundred thousand dollar expense you see here would be offset by a hundred thousand dollar donation from the Lake Havasu Pickleball Association. So we've met with them, and they've committed towards the towards those efforts. So we love to see projects that are that are in demand in the public. And we love to see projects where we have residents that are raising funds and contributing towards these projects. So staff is recommending the addition of eight pickleball courts at Dix Sam Park. But this project, the the pickleball courts was the number one priority for the Parks and Recreation Board. So we did ask them what we wanna see in the community, and this this was their their number one project. We do have some public safety projects identified here. We have a total cost of a project for Fire Station Five rebuild at four point three seven five. We have a project, we have this project in the budget in year five, but not at that amount. We've identified one point six seven million dollars in the in year five for Fire Station Five. It is our oldest fire station, and it is in need of renovations or rebuild. So in future years, we'll take a look at if we wanna allocate more dollars towards that project for a complete demolition of the site and a rebuild of the site. Or maybe we can look at that scope and and identify dollars for for renovations. But it is something that the the city does need to address in the in the next the next few years. You also see the police fuel facility. This is something that's been in the city's budget for a few years now. Right now, we have two, I believe, underground tanks here back behind the the police facility. These are and right now, we need to get away from the underground tanks. If they if they if they bust or if they crack, they're gonna contaminate the the area. So they're and they're old, they're they're the time has come for them to be replaced regardless of if they're underground or overground. So we've identified a few dollars in the budget. By few, I mean two hundred thirty two thousand dollars in the in the budget to 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 remove the underground tanks and install above ground tanks to support the police operations. Some three projects we've identified. We just have, we have all but finished the traffic signal light over on Highway ninety five that leads into the Havasu Two Eighty project. All that needs to be done now is to test and some striping and some signage over there. Once the developer has brought power to the site, we'll be able to test the signal and and turn that on. It was just a few weeks. Well, it's first off, the the traffic signal, that's a two million dollars. These are HSIP funds that be used for these for that project. I think the the city's match on that is four point six. Anyway, it's rated on five percent for the match of that that project. This is a traffic signal that'd be located at Akoma and Swanson. And the high cost of of a traffic signal. When you look at the the line above, it it costs the city about a little over five hundred thousand dollars to install a traffic signal. When we we utilize federal dollars, the the price goes up for a variety of different reasons. One is because of the red tape, but also there's gonna be some right away acquisition and some ADA improvements that are gonna be needed at that intersection. So that's all tied to that project as well. One side note on on Akoma and Swanson as far as the need for a traffic signal there. ADOT has identified that location as the number one intersection in the state of Arizona for meeting warrants required for a traffic signal. So it's something that we we do need. And we're acquiring highway safety improvement funds for that for that project. A tremendous amount of dollars are earmarked for the maintenance of our wastewater system. It takes a lot of care and a lot of dollars for 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 the city to provide services to the to the residents for for wastewater. It's something we we rightfully rightfully so, we take for granted, but the city is continually hard at work improving and maintaining our existing system so that we can avoid breaks and and just and breaks and breaks in the lines as well as breaks in in service. Some of the projects on here I could talk about a little bit is the the eight inch ductile iron force main replacement. This is something we've we've had about six breaks in that line over the last few years. It's a we're spending money on repairing the line, and there's a there's a need for a complete replacement. Council approved some modeling at the two council meetings back. That's gonna allow us to look at this project from a perspective that we where we're we're spending the right amount of dollars on the on the right design for the line. So we're not putting too much too much line down. And there's a opportunity for us to save some dollars rather than just replacing it with exactly what what's what's out there. You'll see in here, too, that we have that Bombay Lift Station reg removal. We've talked about in some previous meetings about the amount of flushable wipes that aren't so flushable that go down go down the toilet into our sewer systems. We spend an enormous amount of time, staff time, and removing these these regs from from the from the system. We we spent a large amount of dollars on two vector trucks that helps us with removal of those those regs. And they're clogging our our pumps, and they're they're costing the city money. So we're looking at a an investment to help us remove these these regs on a a more routine basis. Other investments, large investments within wastewater projects. Again, this is over the course of the next five years. As you'll see, some some older ways for us to address some some order control. And you'll see some large dollar investments that are required to increase the capacity of our wastewater treatment plants. These investments for small increases are far cheaper than additional treatment plants. For looking at additional treatment plants, you're talking in the tune of thirty to forty million dollars for a for a plant. So if we can make some small investments with the existing plants we have to increase capacity, we need to do that. Our community is growing at a at a high rate, and we need to keep up with with those with those demands. Water projects. These are, this is the the cost of providing water services to to the to the public. You'll see the the tank and booster booster station improvements as well as the water main replacement program. The first two items there, these are ongoing efforts that the city takes on to maintain our our tanks. We go in there and sandblast and recoat them and make sure that the the tanks are in good 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 condition. This is, these are the tanks that hold the the city's water supply before it goes to our homes. We wanna make sure we're taking care of taking care of these 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 facilities. Water main replacements, every year, we have dollars allocated to go and replace old water mains. The delivery of water to our to our residents is obviously vitally important. And that third project there, you'll see within the the book you have that was that was delivered to you a few days back. Page forty six and page fifty one, you're looking at two separate projects, but we've combined those two projects into this this line item. So we have a Plan A and a Plan B to address the need for the city identifying a second water source. In my mind, this is the city's number one priority. Right now, we have one source of water for for the for the community. If there's any issues that come up with the distribution lines that that take from the rainy well that we have over at Leonard Bridge Beach right now to our way to our water treatment plant, there's some some issues that that could take place. This is something we need a second water source. We've been, we've, we're very excited about recent conversations with the Arizona State Parks, the new director. Mayor Sheehan, you've been reaching out to him and and developing a really good partnership and relationship. We need his his help on a agreement that's gonna allow us to access State Parks land north of Windsor Park. All we're asking for right now is to get onto that property, drill a few a few wells, well sites, and assess the the water quality in that area to see if it's gonna be feasible for us to construct a second a water source for the for the city or or a second rainy collector well. You'll see some in comparison, a smaller project with Highway ninety five. We need to get a permanent line over to Sarah Park to so we can consistently provide water to those to those to those areas. Where now we have a temporary fix, and we're asking for a a permanent solution at that that area. We have some water main replacement that's been that's been carried forward in the past year. But this water main would allow us to improve water pressure for citizens in the area as well as increase fire flows. And then we're asking for in future years, was that year four, for some water treatment plant improvements. We have a really nice facility that's now aging. And there's a there's a need for us to take a look at some improvements to the water treatment plant, including the enclosure of of our our some of our equipment out in that area where we house our chlorine equipment as well as the we have it's biological filters in our cascade aerator that we have out there. Both of those, that's where the water first comes into the the way the water treatment plant. And there's a need for us to provide some enclosures over those those areas. There's dust that gets in there. We have a gravel operation that's right next door with the the heat that we get in the summer. We've been lucky so far, we've seen minimal examples of this where the staff has reacted, maybe some algae growing in those areas. So it's gonna be very important. Again, we wanna protect the the water supply for the for the residents. And those are some improvements that could be done in that in that effort. So I've gone through the different categories. Right now, this is a this is a listing of all the proposed projects for next year's budget by category. So I've talked about most of these on previous slides, but it's just another way of looking at these projects based on next year's budget. So the expectation here is these projects will be will be completed and will be started and completed in the next year's budget. We talked earlier about the the carryforwards. Hopefully, we can get these projects to come in under the bid under budget. And we'll be able to look at these projects in terms of completing them for the community. With that, that concludes my our our presentation that we have. And if you have questions about the JILSA presentation or the different projects we have identified in the CIP, be happy to to address anything that you've, anything that you have on your mind right now.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Do members of council have any initial questions?
I have a question. Regarding the MPO traffic signal at Akoma and Swanson, that's one hundred percent HSIP. But do we have any say, I mean, in just seeing it, it does, to me, doesn't seem the most needed intersection in Lake Havasu. But is it one of those situations where they're willing to give us the money just because we qualify and it doesn't cost us anything or?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mayor, Councilmember Dolan. It's a we where we've, we trade, outside dollars are good dollars, right? So these are dollars that are that are our residents aren't aren't taxed and are we're not funded by through the city. But there are many strings attached to these these different projects. Some of the strategies we've had in the past is we look at the ADOT data. And there are different criteria for applying for 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 certain improvements. So it's a little morbid, but we look at fatalities in the community. And we look at significant crashes that have occurred in the community based on those intersections. And then sometimes in the past, we've been doing is working backwards to say, okay, that we've, there's an issue over here. What project could we identify that we be funded by ADOT or through HSIP for those for these projects? So this is one of these, one of these areas where where we've seen them, where this has been aligned. Our engineers, our planners are looking at this and saying that there is there is a need for a traffic signal over in this area. And it it does meet all the warrants that ADOT has has identified. Now, similar going forward with some of these projects, we're gonna be taking a little bit of a different strategy. Instead of the 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 process I just described, where you take a look at fatalities and and crash crashes that occur in the community and then try and identify projects for those areas. Sometimes those projects don't necessarily make sense. So we're gonna be identifying projects for for future years in the application process. Many thanks to to Vinnie with the Lake Havasu MPO for for assisting and and the and the the tech committee for their efforts. But we're identifying different projects that may or may not get get funded, but there there are other needs that the community has. And some of those may include, you know, we 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 don't have the ability to to construct sidewalks, curbs and sidewalks throughout the the throughout the community. sidewalks, curbs and sidewalks, uh, throughout the, uh, the, throughout the community. Maybe we can look at, uh, doing some improvements in our washes to develop trails or pedestrian, uh, pedestrian, uh, walkways through there. So that's some of the projects we'll be applying for going forward. Likelihood of those being approved by grant funds is, uh, far less, but that's more than you wanted to know, I'm sure.
All right. And so, but just to clarify, it is a grant, it's not a budget, it's not from our budgeted money, so it's, it's either you can take it or leave it kind of thing?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, yeah, uh, you can. Um, the two, a two million dollar HSIP project would, it will probably cost the city right around a hundred thousand dollars.
And then my other question is, how does that tie into the original plans we already have with Swanson that's starting now? Are we gonna, are we gonna tear up anything a year from now, two years from now to do it, or is it something we can incorporate into this construction so we're ready for it?
Uh, great question. We don't, we don't want to, uh, waste dollars by tearing up, uh, improvements that we've, uh, previously placed. So the planning is in, in place for us to make sure that, uh, the, the two projects, if they both move forward, or if this project with the traffic signal does move forward, that they'll do so in, in unison with that, uh, existing project at the time. So, yeah, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, and Councilmember Dolan, we do, uh, still have to budget for any expense we think's going to happen and have a balanced budget at the end. So sometimes there'll be numbers in the budget that we have to put in, but then we have to, to take other pieces out of that puzzle to still make it balanced at the bottom. So with some of these grants, that's where it gets a little bit tricky. So, um, Mr. Knutson, can you explain a little bit more about pickleball? The number's pretty, pretty high. You talked about just, uh, courts, but there's more improvements going on out there if that was to move forward.
Yeah, so there isn't, uh, the actual construction of, of the pickleball courts is, um, they, they trigger things, right? So if we have more courts, that means there's a need for more parking and that means, uh, we need to connect the, the courts with the parking, uh, with the parking lot. So, um, you'll see within these numbers we've identified are, these numbers that we've identified here are based, uh, based on, um, parking improvements and a connector, a connector road from the parking lot to the, uh, to the courts. We utilize numbers that, uh, based on construction that took place when we installed the first pickleball court. Um, the hope is that we can, uh, we can do that at a, at a lesser cost, but for a budget number, we've identified, uh, this cost here. So this isn't actual dollars spent, this is a budget number and with a little bit of luck, we put the bids out, we can come in a little bit under. But yeah, it encompasses eight courts and then the, uh, the parking lot and road improvements.
And those parking lot improvements are necessary now even just for the use of, uh, the Little Lake field at certain times. So it'll be a good addition for, for both assets and, and uses for that part. Uh, can we also talk a little bit about the courthouse estimate where?
Sure.
That came from?
So the, uh, this is a, um, this is based on construction of courthouses in other, um, cities or recently constructed courthouses in other cities in Arizona. So we, this is a budget number that's, uh, that we have identified at the end of the, uh, the CIP. Um, as we get closer to that project, that number will change. Hopefully it'll go down. Um, but this is, uh, right now this is a budget number that we've identified based on construction activity for, um, courthouses of similar size that we're, we're thinking about right now.
All right. Do any other members of, uh, council have any questions? Councilmember Lynn?
I, I know that you talked a little bit about the island fields and the improving parks and it's not a line item in here, is it? Did you say there, the next time you present, it will be?
Yeah, so that, uh, the hundred fifty thousand dollars that, uh, right now that I'm recommending for every other year for, uh, for park improvements, that'll be, uh, it's not, um, that's not a CIP, um, um, function, so, but it'll be captured in the, uh, in the operating budget. So you'll see it at the next work session.
Okay, and then a second question on the envi- environmental learning center in downtown Catalyst. So I see the price of three point six.
Correct.
And then on another thing, I see where it's considered a donation. So are the thoughts on that, that that project isn't necessarily going to go through unless we have partners and investors in it?
For the, uh, environmental, uh, environmental, uh, excuse me, the ELC? It's, uh, yes, that's a project that we've, uh, communicated, uh, from a staff perspective and the council has, uh, communicated that as recently at, at the last, uh, retreat that we had, is that it's vitally important for that project to have, um, strategic partners and by that I mean funding partners for two reasons. One, it, we need to offset the cost of this facility. Some original estimates of that facility are upwards of nine, ten million dollars. Um, the city does not have resources to fund, uh, fund that project. Um, if we get five, six, uh, uh, strategic, strategic funding partners for that project, then, uh, then we start looking at, uh, dollars that, uh, the city could, could contribute would coming out of this, coming out of this line item, uh, for that project and just look at it from an overall use perspective of that facility. If the city went in and built that, uh, the ELC, in, in my mind, it would be a, a pretty boring facility. So we need to, if we want to make this an exciting, um, location for people to visit, we need partnerships from game and fish and, and the, uh, the tribes and, um, uh, US Wildlife, all the different, uh, things that, uh, are tied to the, uh, the water quality of the Lower Colorado River. Well, right now we, we don't have a, we don't have a, a proposal in front of us.
Okay, and I'm not sure where it is in here. There's, uh, with the infrastructure over by the Riviera, it was somewhere in here. That's HERF money, correct?
Um, yeah, it's a combination, are we talking about the, this one here?
Yes.
This is the, this is the, uh, the traffic signal?
Yeah, that's not general fund money, that's HERF money, right?
Yeah, I think, uh, is Greg in the audience? Is that, uh, do, do we know? Put you on the spot here, Greg, I'm not sure if that was the traffic signal in, uh, uh, for the two eighty, I assume that was there, but I don't want to speak out of turn.
Yeah, that, that project is actually, uh...
The traffic signal on Highway ninety-five at the entrance to the Riviera, is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, um, on page twenty-three in the booklet, it has, um, nineteen twenty, another forty-six thousand, but I see it, it says a hundred percent HERF, is that correct?
That's correct. It, that's a carryforward on an existing contract that was a hundred percent funded with HERF.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, to follow up on, uh, Councilmember Lynn's question, uh, Mr. Knutson, on the environmental learning center, the downtown catalyst, uh, it is a little concerning that we're, we're pushing the, the, the main money to not this next year, just if we get a partner that comes in, we won't have very much flexibility.
So these, uh, um, thank you for bringing that up. We're treating this line item, this funding source and the, and these, the, this, uh, combination of these two projects completely different than we are the rest of the projects identified in the CIP. So when I talked about earlier, um, about the dedicated funding stream for the CIP and for these types of projects, um, this is the one exception. So this is something that, that's unique based on the competition and the, the, uh, the promises that the city has made to the, to the community. Right now we've identified in that year, but that's just, but depending upon when the plan comes up before the city. We are not using the dedicated revenue stream for this project like we are the rest. The dollars for this are coming from, uh, the city's, uh, reserves.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to add on that also, um, you know, we have the, the environmental learning center plus the downtown catalyst. Um, are, are these separated or are they one in the same as far as, you know, moving forward? I mean, I don't think our public has heard anything about, you know, are these things moving ahead or not moving ahead? Do we have any idea of, uh...
So, uh, Mayor and, and, uh, Councilmember, what we have here is that it's basically a placeholder with, but a placeholder with real dollars. So the city is not the, uh, the lead on either one of these projects. We rely on pillar four and we rely on the, the PED to, uh, to take the lead on these projects. And when those entities come to the city with a, uh, proposal or a plan, then we, we have, uh, dollars tied to, uh, tied to that project if the council wants to move forward based on, uh, based on those plans. So right now, it, last year we made the decision to kind of lump these two together. We don't know which one is going to move quicker than the other. We don't know what the dollars are, are tied, tied to either one of these projects. So, um, I felt this approach gives the council the most flexibility, uh, moving forward, um, based on a few unknowns and because we're not taking the lead on these projects, we're, um, we propose this strategy.
Perfect, thank you very much. What, while I, uh, may I go ahead with a couple of other questions I had? Um, on the funding, uh, sources, we have the IDD. Okay, so we know that's going away in...
Correct.
Twenty twenty-three. Um, what does that involve per household now? And, and you had said it's very limited, there aren't a lot, there are some paying and some not.
Correct.
And, um, something to look at in the future, but what would that involve in the future if, that's a big if, we decide to have everyone pay into something like that? I know it has to be voted on, but do you have any idea of what, what it is per household now and what it would be in the future if that happened?
You know, it's, uh, it's based on, thank you, Councilmember McCoy, it's, uh, based on, uh, you know, the assessment, so every house is paying something a little bit, uh, different based on the, uh, the, the value of, of the, uh, the property. Um, our goal, the city's goal, at least right now, and we got a few years and, and a few, and a, um, a lot of more information to collect before we get to a point where we're going to have actual dollars, but it's the, right now it's the city's, uh, expectation that we don't want to increase the amount of funds that the city's receiving for these, uh, um, that we're getting through the IDD right now that's coming to the city, um, but trying to find a way to, uh, just to provide the existing level of funds to the city. So the thought there is if we were, if we discontinued the IDD, which is an absolute, we have to do that, state is, the AG's office is mandating that we do that, um, but if we expand that district, then there's more people paying into that, that, that pool, which would be, uh, a lesser impact for those that are paying into it right now because there's more people paying into it, so that helps.
Yeah, that's a big revenue in source that...
Yes.
Will make a big difference to the city.
That's how we fund our water service, yeah.
Exactly. And my next question...
It's about a fi- it's in the five million range though, it's total to the budget contribution.
Five point seven million.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question for the moment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, back in the five-year capital improvement plan, sorry, allergies with the winds, um, I'm looking at the, the pie chart here.
Mm-hmm.
And are these, um, currently, or this is predicted in the next five years, increases or, um, as I sit, as I'm looking at this, I'm looking at public safety. Um, that was a big topic, um, for our, uh, retreat. Um, i- is this what we're looking for this? This seems low.
Sure. Uh, I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember McCoy. What you have here is the, the CIP. So there's some additional funding that is, is, uh, being, uh, recommended for public safety, for police and fire, but you're going to see that a lot more in the, uh, the next presentation when we talk about the ongoing operating budget. We haven't purchased, uh, patrol cars for police in three years, I believe it is. We've identified about, uh, four, you're not seeing it here because that's going to be in, captured in the ongoing. These are, uh, um, these are kind of the bigger projects that we identify that, that have to meet certain criteria. You'll also see in, in fire, we'll be recommending, um, additional funds for, uh, training, for turnout gear, for fire hose, those types of things will, will be, uh, will be in there, but it's, it's captured in, in, in the ongoing operating.
Thank you very much.
Do any other members of council have, uh, any questions? Vice Mayor Lynn?
Thank you. Uh, a couple of things. On page sixteen of the, the booklet that you gave us, it shows the sale of property at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Is that the downtown catalyst project, uh, at the corner of Curio and McCullough?
Yes, sir.
And that is selling off a portion of that property, not, I mean, we paid a million dollars for it, we don't want to sell the whole thing for five hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, no, that's a, that's a portion, um, somewhere in the vicinity of about a third of that property, would be the expectation there.
Excellent. So we're definitely, uh, ahead of that, that curve there that we have, the, the property is worth more than what we paid for it.
Oh, certainly, it, it's risen in value, you bet.
Excellent, all right. Uh, Dixant Park, are any of the funds, uh, that you're targeting for, uh, Dixant Park are going to go into the ball fields or is it all for parking lot and pickleball fields?
So right now this is, uh, this project is, uh, um, is eight courts, parking lot and connector road. That's what that, uh, that dollar value tied, tied there. We do have a master plan for, um, a total of sixteen courts and two ball fields out in that area. So we're getting to that point. This is, that we've done, uh, the first step was some park improvements out there that include four courts. Um, again, the master plan shows the two ball fields and sixteen courts. This will get us one step closer to that master plan if that's, uh, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
And on that, I would like to, uh, to thank the pickleball community for raising a hundred thousand dollars to put towards, uh, the operations that they want to see come forward. Um, hopefully some other, uh, organizations can, can look at that and maybe use that as a model to try to raise funds for some of these other projects that we'd like to do. Uh, the next question I have is the courthouse. Uh, obviously we definitely need it, but is three point five million dollars realistic for, I mean, you look at the county, they're, they're at what, twenty-three million for, for their courthouse, so...
We're not, we're not...
Three point five million, is that, uh, going to be realistic for us to build a courthouse here on, on this location and give them the space and, and they're what, radically under what they need to operate, uh, right now? So are we going to be able to fulfill what they actually need for that kind of money?
Three point five million in my mind, um, makes, uh, makes perfect sense in, in how to construct that, that facility. So we're not looking at four-story structures or things of that nature. Um, again, we're able to save some money because we're not looking at the acquisition of land. If we build it on this, on the, uh, the campus that we're on right now or PD and City Hall and, and our other functions are, uh, already housed, there's some savings there with, um, sharing of space, conference rooms, things like that. So we build it in, into this campus, there's some, uh, cost-saving measures that can take place. So I'm confident, uh, we can, uh, we can do it for, uh, an amount that, uh, very close to that number.
And then the, uh, the operating cost for that building will be offset by the fact that we don't have to pay rent any longer to the, to the county.
Correct, we pay about a hundred...
At least a portion of it.
Yeah, well, we pay about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, a year right now just for the, the lease of the, uh, the county facility. So there's other expenses tied to that, but that's just for the lease. So yeah, there's, uh, some, uh, some savings that will realize on, on, uh, on that end.
And then a couple of things that I'd like to bring up, just for the public's knowledge, uh, the rag issue you talked about, that's causing us maintenance issues and that costs money. Uh, if we want to save dollars, um, what we need to do is take care of what we have and don't be putting things down into the sewer system, uh, that are costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix every time one of these lines ruptures, uh, because it's, uh, it's hurting us in the long run. Um, and then, uh, you mentioned that the HERF funds and the VLT funds are tied to population and, uh, the way they get that population is during the census. We have a census coming up in twenty twenty. If we want to get more dollars coming back, you're already paying the taxes, as Mr. Knutson likes to say, you're already paying the taxes, but they're going to Phoenix. So if you want them to come back to Lake Havasu when the census comes around, put down that you live in Lake Havasu, if you live here six months and one day out of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of council have any questions?
So I have a couple of just education questions for me. Can we talk a little bit about, um, it's on page thirty-four, it's the south intake influence screen replacement?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the description, um, identifies that, uh, the structure was inspected in two thousand and six and the screen was non-existent. Uh, what, what does that mean? Because it looks like we're trying to invest in a, in a screen, but it seems like we haven't had one for a long time.
Uh, yeah, Mayor, my, my note on that page is, uh, we needed an updated description on there too, so, uh, um, uh, Mr. Mark Clark will help us out.
Fifty years ago, McCullough needed water at his golf course, so he put a line into the lake, turned it up and put a redwood structure with a screen across it to keep the bigger chunkies out of the ponds. Two thousand and six, I was scuba diving, took a dive down there. The actual screens that would keep big fish from swimming into those pumps were not there can't allow this situation to exist forever just from a safety standpoint and knowledge. And so, we do need to put some kind of screening material there to just keep some of the other stuff that we wouldn't want necessarily going into the ponds. Luckily, that's not our fresh water supply, that's just for the golf course, but again, it's something that we do need to look into. Those are just an estimate. We think that the cost will be lower than that because what we're envisioning now is just kind of some kind of concrete structure that we would drop around that existing pipe and then attach the screens to it. But again, it'll take a little bit of engineering and then permitting will be the most difficult challenge, obviously, getting the permissions to do all that work through the BLM and BOR and everybody else.
Okay. Thank you. And then on page twenty-nine, there's a project to influence pump station surge improvements. It seems like we've been having some, some emergency issues in that area, but we're projecting two years out to do those repairs. Is that something that we should be looking at more urgently?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask either Greg or is Jeremy in the audience to maybe address that one? Jeremy Abbott is our assistant engineer for the city.
Morning, Mayor, Council. So, the inflow pump station is a lift station that provides flow to our North Regional Treatment Plant. And over its life, there have been some major repairs done to that station. We did an analysis a couple of years back that identified a couple of alternatives to reduce and eliminate the surge at that location. So, essentially, we're budgeting to put that package together next year and then construct that repair. There were three alternatives. What you see in the budget is for a hydro pneumatic tank to be constructed at that site. That was the most cost-effective solution.
And waiting two years would be fine?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Perfect. All right. Do any members of council have any further questions of staff at this time? So, a couple of things for direction that we talked a little bit about, just to make sure that we're comfortable with it, is the construction sales tax as a dedicated source of funding for CIP projects, certainly in this coming budget year and into the future. Is that a mechanism or a strategy that we feel is good direction to give to staff? All right. It looks like I have a consensus of everyone. The other one, of course, we'll address this in our next budget hearing as well, but the recommendation of keeping the property tax rate flat is what everything's predicated on. So, if we're not comfortable with that at this point, we should give staff direction so that when we have our next budget session, they can have those adjustments. Everyone's comfortable there? Okay. And Mr. Knutson, is there anything I missed that you need staff direction on? Those were the points that I was making notes of.
No, I mean, kind of that overarching strategy of the city foregoing some large, large projects and trying to maintain our existing facilities. Is that, I mean, that's, is that, that's the direction staff is going? You know, if we're getting nods from the council, so that's something else that I'd like to get some feedback on.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right. Seems like we have consensus in that area. And then Councilmember McCoy and Mr. Knutson covered it, but the IDD, we obviously have several million dollars in projects that are in this five-year plan that are outside of when the IDD is there. So, we just can't talk about IDD enough and so I just want to mention the word again so it becomes part of your vocabulary and we start having those conversations within the community about how we want to address it and what we want to do with that area. So, it's irrigation and drainage district, IDD, and we want to all to have that top-of-mind awareness and talk to any of the council members and share your feedback on what that might look like going forward. And then from my perspective, Mr. Knutson, on the next hearing, if we could talk a little bit more about that annual or that semi-annual park maintenance, I want to focus a little bit on that. I think that there's a strong focus within the community to look at options that we can do just a little bit more. So, if you could do some of those things in the meantime before we meet again.
Sure. We'll do some analysis and be prepared for council direction.
Great. All right. Before we move on to the final call to the public, oh, is this a public hearing? Do I open this as a public hearing? Oh, this is a public hearing. So, with that, does anyone want to address the city council on this item? Yeah. If you can just state your name for the record and turn on the microphone, please, as well.
My name is Mark Zief. I'm a local here. I've been here four years. I volunteer for two boards, the Airport Advisory Board and Parks and Recreation Board. I just want to make sure that you guys have a budget or a plan for sidewalks, crosswalks. I know it's the last of what you said, address that. I didn't know what budget it was coming out of, if that's just operations. But the main theme I got, I got from today was let's fix what we have before we build new. You know, I've seen projects end and grow and end just within three years. So, I just want to make a comment on the environmental learning center. I would say squash it because you've got plenty of environmental learning centers within the BLM. This is a national wildlife refuge, nothing but learning centers and posted informational across the river. The high school has environmental learning centers. I'm sure we could save our money and implement all those funds towards other projects that are existing problems. There's sidewalks that don't exist where thousands of people walk on the weekends. There's crosswalks that don't exist where thousands of people walk on the weekends. I picked up a job doing Uber part-time. It's kind of fun, but it's woken me up to what's going on with the traffic, public safety and crosswalks and sidewalks. I figure, why keep building things when you should just fix what we have already in this great community? Other than that, I just say, great job, great presentation. I like where you're going with your vision. That was just the one thing that I thought we could hold off on for a while was a new environmental learning center, unless it was going to be paid for by someone else. I believe the, I don't even know where the area it would be, would be, so if it's in the Riviera, if it's in downtown, I don't know. But I'll, one more thing, the intersection at Swanson and Tacoma is good idea. If you can get grants, it's good and I like what you guys have been able to do. Appreciate working with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. And the environmental learning center is a placeholder in the budget, so there'll still be some additional conversation. There will be funding partners, as the city manager alluded to, so please stay focused on the public hearings in that matter to learn more about what that would be. If you could turn on the microphone, is the microphone on? No, it's off.
Oh, no?
It is now, yes.
Chuck Vaughn, Lake Havasu City. A couple of things. I remember a few years ago, or quite a few years ago, that they had planned on putting on what they called City Cal West. It was in addition to the City Hall. Have they scrapped that plan and is that where the area of the court is that you're planning on putting in?
Yeah, so we are learning more about City Hall West and finding plans and talking to folks about that. So, that is not in the plan right now for City Hall West, but there is plenty of land on this site for what they would be proposing. It's still too early to know exactly what the site layout would look like. I just, do you want to add, Mr. Knutson?
But yeah, thank you, Chuck, but that's, that is the location we're talking about. So, it would be an addition to City Hall on the west side. That's the, that's the idea right now.
Okay. Also, at Dick Stamp Park, with the new pickleball courts and that going in and them raising the funds, that should be a, a lot of the other sports that want, have better facilities could use their example of raising some funds, too, to help. But out at Dick Stamp Park, I remember years ago that they had a problem with not going up there, but they had a absorbent amount of money for dirt work up there to level off the property and stuff like that. Is that getting up into that area where we're going to be spending a large amount of money for moving dirt around?
Mayor, Chuck, this is, the earthwork that's been performed in the past has largely been completed. So, we have identified the need for more masquerading up in that area. So, the, we're looking at eight courts, parking lot, connector road and engineering and project management cost tied to it. That's what we need to do to accomplish that project.
No concession stands or anything like that out there?
Nope. But open to more community donations.
Yeah.
There are existing concession stands over the low-league section.
Also, you had said something about, I don't remember exactly what it was about, but you said something about putting something on the ballot to change something. Do you remember what you said about that?
Yeah, Mr. Knutson, I believe that's the IDD.
Is that the IDD?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you said that a possibility of raising our water bills, 12 to 15 dollars a month and stuff like that. Okay. To me, instead of doing that for a better, I would think, and I'm not sure, what is our city real estate tax rate right now? Is it 0.68 or something like that?
It's 67 cents.
Okay. 67 cents. To me, I would say, look and see what it would take to, how much to raise that, and I know you guys like to keep it flat and we've kept it flat for quite a few years. But to me, that way, everybody would pay, if you're a heavy water user or a non-heavy water user, plus it's a tax deduction. It would give us, we can't deduct our water bills, but at least we could deduct our real estate taxes in that. I would look and see what it would take to replace that money on possibly raising the city real estate tax rather than raising all our water bills that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. And when Mr. Knutson was speaking, there's a variety of options there and one would be potential rate increases, others would be a new district. And so, there's a lot of options that we'll talk about and there'll be several meetings and community input because we definitely appreciate the feedback.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to talk about here because we talk about like raising rates or these types of things. We're trying to make it a break-even scenario for the existing rates and fees that residents are paying right now. So, we don't want to put any more further burden. The only other thing would be that if we expand that district, it'd be more people that are paying into that pool, but we're not looking at raising fees or rates tied to the, a scenario in response to Swanson, the IDD. We want the same amount, we're looking for the same amount of dollars. That's the hope.
Good point. Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, if I may, I just want to make sure to thank the staff for the hard work they've done on this because this is great, lots of information and appreciate you bringing it like this. There is one thing that I was hoping either Mayor or our city manager or whomever might address that I get asked quite frequently is even though we had town halls to discuss this, et cetera, why in the world did we plan construction when Desert Storm was coming?
Oh, man, I come swinging with that one every time. That's how I start everything, is road construction on Lake Havasu Avenue. But they didn't put it on the agenda for me. So, yeah, it, timing of, it's always good, I'm a person that likes to deal with facts, so always put the facts out, then we can talk about what that means. As a reminder, construction did not start till after the first of the year. It is on track with all of the weather events that we've had in this winter, which we've had a bunch of them, we forget about that, too. But it is on schedule and the truth is, there's no good time to do road construction and we appreciate everyone's patience and we've mitigated and done a lot of things and made adjustments so that we could anticipate this weekend, most notably paving the intersection at McCulloch and Lake Havasu Avenue, as well as paving lanes of traffic along Lake Havasu Avenue and just opening Swanson's intersection this morning in anticipation. But the timing during our town halls and open meetings, we actually had several businesses indicate this was the best time and that they preferred that it was done over the winter months versus the summer months. So, the good news is it's on schedule and we've done the week before Memorial Day and like three months from now, we won't even be talking about it. People will forget all about it. So, but again, in the meantime, we appreciate your patience. Please drive safe in that area, especially today with the additional road closures from Desert Storm's street festival that will be occurring as well. You're welcome. Councilmember Lynn?
I just want to make it really clear again on that environmental learning center and downtown catalyst, the 3.6, so that the people out in the audience understand and those watching, that that's not, we're not starting a project. We're not planning on starting a project. We're not using that money. We're waiting for investors so that everybody understands that that's not happening today. It's not happening in 2021 unless there's investors, correct?
Investors and a plan. We have nothing to decide on right now until we have something in front of us, correct?
Yeah, with that being said, though, it still is a priority. So, it's still a priority and we're still moving forward, but we have to have the right partners at the table, which has been the case since the inception of this community-led vision of the Vision 2020. So, it's still a definite priority and folks are working really hard to make it happen. So, it's in our best interest as a community to get the downtown project done and bring the right partners together for the environmental learning center. But your point is correct, Councilmember Lynn, although it still remains a priority. All right, this is still a public hearing. Would anyone like to address city council on this matter? If you could just state your name for the record and make your way to the podium.
Which button am I pushing?
You're good. The microphone's on, so you're fine.
My name is Chad Underwood. My family came here in 1976 and we're known as some of the pioneers of this area. What I want the council and other people to keep in mind, I know that the, there was some proposition put in place for sports complexes, other items, and now it's kind of came to our notice that we're not going to be building anything, we're just going to kind of be cleaning up what we have and expanding. We coach youth soccer and we want everyone to keep in mind, whether it's football, soccer, cricket, whatever else, but when we make these improvements, we clean up these parks, keep all the sports in mind so that we can build a budget or a schedule to share these places. So, just because we're, Dick Stamp is baseball, doesn't mean we can't throw a couple of goals up there and have soccer up there, things like that. So, I just want to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you. Yeah, that is such a great point and exactly what we're trying to say. So, thank you for pointing that out. All too often, we've had all of these different facilities that were very segmented where ownership rights were almost staked at these different parks for what the different uses were going to be. And we want our parks to be enjoyed by all citizens, enjoying all activities. And so, our approach is definitely more of a multi-use approach that's effective for all of the users and the different sports. So, thank you so much for bringing that point up. Does anyone else would like to address city council on any matter, or excuse me, on this matter? Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, technically, it's one shot, but yeah, feel free.
I'm sorry. I'm a Gemini. No, intersection at 95 and North Kiowa, where the new Starbucks went in, I know it was talked about a while back with the old mayor, promising to get this done when I just moved to town and that's huge. I mean, I almost see, just because the accidents aren't reported, doesn't mean they're not happening. So, we just got to keep that in mind. The danger's at a higher risk now than it's ever been with the new Starbucks in there. So, just a heads up, maybe we could do something there.
Yeah, I'll actually let, Vice Mayor Lane, if you don't mind, is familiar with that project.
No, I don't mind at all. The bids were just opened up for the Kiowa Highway 95 project, I believe it was the 24th, is that correct, Benny? And ADOT is moving forward with approving that. Once again, it did come in over budget, but ADOT is working to come up with the additional funding to make sure that that intersection is redone. There'll be a right-hand turn lane and they will be doing some microsealing in the area and they'll be putting in a median. And then our MPO director, Benny Hughes here, is also working on coming up with the funding to put in a new signal light right there in front of the Staples Center. So, people won't be making the left turns across traffic to turn in and out of that parking lot right there. So, I have addressed the state board several times on this, trying to come up with funding. You know, my big thing is if it's predictable, it's preventable. So, yes, there's lots of accidents there and with, through the MPO, we're working diligently to bring some more safety projects to that area using ADOT funds because it's, that is a, an ADOT highway. It's not a freeway, it's a highway, but it's still run by ADOT and State Route 95 needs to be paid for by the state and not taking city taxpayer dollars where we need to use that money on our city streets. So, but we're working on it.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone else want to address city council regarding this matter? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Does any member of council have any last-minute comments before we move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our final call to the public? No? All right. We'll move on to item six, which is a call to the public. This is where you can now address city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Make your way to the microphone and just state your name. Would anyone like to address city council at the call to the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.